I'll call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. I'll call it on the county board of order. Got a roll call by the county clerk, please.
Supervisor Jones? Supervisor Brockler? Supervisor Hertz? Supervisor Morris? Supervisor Pinky? Supervisor Bastrow? Supervisor Johns? Supervisor Smith? Supervisor Martin? Supervisor Mass? Green? Supervisor White? Supervisor Drayden? Supervisor Backland? Supervisor Canard? Supervisor Paulson? Supervisor? Supervisor Jacob? Supervisor Wendell? Supervisor Keller? Supervisor Fitzjoe? Supervisor Newman? And Supervisor Schultz?
Supervisor Coos?
Yep, and then I have Supervisor Kelly, Supervisor David, Supervisor Leonard, Supervisor Wong, Supervisor Coos, Supervisor Roberts, and Supervisor Christiansen all on Zoom. Supervisor Kane, okay.
We have a quorum. Stand for a vote, which is Supervisor Patrick, do you hear?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. It's one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in common.
In the morning, silence. Good evening. Are we in compliance with your convenience law? Mr. Inspector? We are, Mr. Chair. I would like to approve the agenda.
Second.
By Supervisor Smith, second by Supervisor Johns. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes? There's none. The agenda is approved. Approval of minutes from August 20th, 2020. Supervisor Leonard.
I'll move approval of the minutes as presented.
Seconded. Seconded by Supervisor Morris. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes? None. Minutes are approved. Communications.
First, we have the treasurer's monthly report, which is on the screen sheet. Secondly, we have an appointment by our county board chair.
I see Nancy, Chair of the County Board of Supervisors, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, has appointed authority for standing committees here by point Haley Kaufman, the local emergency planning committee, for an intermediate, determinate term. That dated August 20th of August 2020. You had Nancy, Chair.
Okay, and then the last thing is the zoning committee notice of public hearing, which takes place on September 17th. And it begins at 7:00 PM. The courthouse doors will be open at 6:30.
And under the communications before public comment, part of our communications tonight is to honor our retirees. So, Ms. Paul.
Please be aware, this is the first time we've done retirement recognitions virtually. So, we do have quite a list of individuals who've retired since, actually, since April. And if you look over here, you'll see a lot of class, which means that these individuals have been with the county for a lot of years. So, we had eight retirees during that time that had over 204 years of service with the county. I'm going to recognize all the individuals. We do have one virtual, and we asked Kathy Colley to say a few words, and then bring that into chat, and she would like to say a few words as well. There are a couple of these, and the first one to start out with was Mary Wallis. She's the project director supervisor at the health department over 15 years. And whether she's here or not, I'm going to say this. I used to work with her at the Ford accident hospital in the lab for a lot of years, so I knew her before she started with the county, and well before I started with the county. The other individual, Robert Hall, who was a deputy, patrol deputy with the sheriff's department for 35 years. He played ball with my husband a lot of years ago, which may or not, may or may not have been coached by the sheriff at that point, so. Those two individuals, I'm afraid, maybe didn't show up because I was presenting, and of course, there are some stories I could have told about either one of them. Mark Evans was adult protective service care manager at Human Services for almost 30 years. Gary Trump at the highway department as a maintenance worker for over 32 years. Ken Tenny's was a patrol deputy with the county for over 25 years. Tim Bostic ended his career with the county at the sheriff's department as a sergeant in the jail over 20 years of service with us. And Darren Dinucci, who was a jail deputy over 25 years. So, as I'm going to run back to the computer and bring Kathy on, I'd also like to recognize Lynette Holman, who was the early intervention service coordinator for Human Services for 22 years, or that she ended up for a career. So Kathy, if you're on?
I am, I am on. Thank you, Terry. Hello, everyone. It is my pleasure to recognize Lynette Holman this evening. As Terry mentioned, Lynette worked for our Birth to Three, Jefferson County Human Services program for 22 years, dedicated her career to helping children in our Birth to Three program. She brought sincere compassion and really unmatched knowledge to our community. Lynette assured that our program always recognized and captured the family voice. Her imprint will remain on the Birth to Three program and our staff for many years to come. She was a true advocate for every child and made sure that the child and the family received every available service. Lynette also had the unique gift to share her own experience in a really helpful and caring way with families. So, it is with great gratitude that I recognize Lynette Holman. Thank you, Lynette.
Thank you, Kathy.
Lynette, if you want to say any few words, go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me? Yeah, thank you Kathy so much for that. I appreciate that. That means a lot to me. And I retired with, not really wanting to retire at the time that I did, but just because of life events, I needed to. Just fun time with my mom and my husband. And I really truly missed Birth to Three, and I appreciate all the years and working with everybody there. It meant so much to me and to be able to help those families. And it does my heart good to have been there for all the families. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette.
Public comments, any public comments tonight? I think they're on the agenda. I think they're on the agenda. So now we'll move on to resolutions of committee reports, resolutions, ordinance, and finance committee. Supervisor Jones?
Yep. Resolution number 2021, entering the contract with Edge Consulting for structural engineering services related to the 911 telecommunication system improvement project. In 2018, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and law enforcement agencies utilized the county's 911 emergency response system, identified the need for the system to be upgraded to ensure the reliability and sustainability of the system. Jefferson County has since contracted with General Communications to develop the P-25 digital radio system infrastructure and True North Consulting to assist us managing the contract with General Communications. Over the course of the project, it has become clear that the new tower structures will need to be constructed due to the specifications necessary to support the equipment for the current and future needs of the 911 telecommunications system. Edge Consulting has engaged to provide structural engineering services in Jefferson County and several other towers, and as such, possess variety of knowledge of the county's current tower structure. The law enforcement emergency management committee considered this resolution July 31, 2020, and informally recommended to enter into a contract with Edge Consulting. The finance committee considered this resolution August 13, 2020, and voted to enter into a contract with Edge Consulting to perform structural engineering services that would cost not to exceed $244,000 over the course of the project. The finance committee recommended forwarding to the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors for approval. Fiscal note. Funding for this project has been included as part of the $3.5 million currently budgeted in the 2020 capital project budget account number 4.594819 for the 911 telecommunication system improvement project. No budget adjustment is necessary. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Second. The second was by Supervisor Morris. Any discussion? Questions? All favor?
Aye.
All votes? There's none. Pass it by Morris. Supervisor Jones?
Resolution number 202022, disallowing claim of the deed of voluntary. The claim is commended against Jefferson County for damages. Claim has been reviewed by the county insurance carrier women and was recommended for disallowance based on the finding that the county has no liability for this claim and is not legally responsible for alleged damages. This resolution formally denies the claim filed against Jefferson County and directs the corporation counsel to give the payment notice of disallowance. The finance committee met on August 13, 2020, and recommended forwarding this resolution to county board for approval. Fiscal note, this matter has been referred to the Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Chartered Company Women's and will be resolved in accordance with Jefferson County policy. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved by Supervisor Jones, there are the second. Seconded by Supervisor Johns. Any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion, questions? All favor?
Aye.
All votes? There's none, the resolution passes. Supervisor Jones?
Resolution number 2023, authorizing the county administrator to enter in a letter of intent with Ike Lee Development LLC for the sale of approximately 12.58, excuse me, 12.8 acres of land owned by Jefferson County, formerly used at Jefferson County Highway site in the city of Jefferson. Jefferson County has been preparing to sell the former central highway site in the city of Jefferson for redevelopment use. Efforts have included, one, working with the DNR for final environmental exposure; two, rezoning the property to a mixed-use zoning within the city of Jefferson; three, developing and approving a certified survey map to validate that joint properties involve future land use and development; four, coordinating with the city of Jefferson for future development, including the development of a joint city-county park on the floodplain area of the property; five, funding by the city of Jefferson for a new road and utilities within the property for future development; six, negotiations for a land exchange with the city of Jefferson Housing Authority. The county has entered in negotiations with various potential developers for the development of the former highway site over the last 12 to 18 months. The finance committee has been providing updates on potential offers to purchase this property, but none of the offers are sufficient for serious consideration. The county administrator met with Ike Lee Development, which had expressed interest in the development of the property. Ike Lee Development is currently engaged in several projects in the city of Jefferson and has a good understanding of the market. Jefferson County Finance Committee met in closed session on August 13, 2020 for the purposes of considering offers to purchase this property and provided guidance to the county administrator over acceptable terms and conditions of sale. If the terms and conditions are met, the finance committee determined that it was up to the best interest of the county to sell the property to Ike Lee Development. Ike Lee Development is not seeking tax increment financing from the city of Jefferson, and to date, a tax increment financing district has not been established for this property. Therefore, the proposed project will immediately generate property taxes for all taxing authorities covered by this project. The county administrator finalized negotiations based on the terms and conditions established by the finance committee, and subsequently received a formal letter of intent for the purchase of this property at the price of $80,000 per acre for approximately 12.8 acres. The finance committee has recommended forwarding this to Jefferson County Board of Supervisors for their approval. Fiscal note, proceeds from the sale of property will be collected into the county's capital project fund. The finance committee will review plans for the use of these proceeds and make a recommendation to the county board of supervisors at future meetings. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
On the second. Supervisor Smith. Discussion, questions?
Mr. Chair?
So, most of the property there is to the east of the new street that's been installed primarily where the old facility was. It also includes the property that's north of the drainage line, this line, and east of the new road as well. It includes the property that's south of Pruner, a small little parcel, it's by a lift station right down there. And then across on the west side of the street, there was an old yellow pre-indian structure, approximately two acres, where that's where it was talked about, past as I would go, central brewery site, et cetera. That would be included in this. With furniture store used to have, yes, that's a part, yes, by the lift station. That would be.
Another question?
I want to make one quick clarification of an executive summary that says it's not an existing tip or tid right now. This property isn't a tip or tid right now, but it's towards the end of the expiration. So, it's almost done with spending a period, so just, I noted that when it's coming for tonight, it is in a state district that's about to expire, so.
Question?
Another question?
Mike Kelly? Did we receive any appraisals on this property?
Mike, wait a second, we've got to get a mic out here.
He's on Zoom.
Hello?
That's better.
Thank you. Have we had the property appraised, and how's this offer compared to the appraisals?
We had appraisal done about, let's say, three or four years ago. This exceeds the appraisal that was done about three to four years ago, like quite a bit.
Well, wouldn't it be wise to have it appraised now that we've made the final kind of design for the property that could significantly affect its value?
I'll leave that to the board, but without one, it was appraised, the perk wasn't included for that appraisal value, knowing that it's a value to the east of the road.
And this offer is in line with that appraisal?
Do you read depression, Mike?
Is this offer in line or fit that appraisal?
It's higher than the appraisal.
Thank you.
Another question? Kirk Long, aye?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize if this has already been addressed, I'm having a real difficult time hearing here. Does this sale mean that the plan to create a joint city-county park on the floodplain part of the property is no longer being pursued, and if so, why?
Supervisor, we'll understand. Actually, that park is about 85% complete already. They're in the midst of actually installing the piers right now. Our parks department has been installing all the, actually along the shoreline, restoration there. Once that is completed, we'll be coming with a final lift for parking up, the highway department addition, final lift of the street itself. The only thing that will not be complete yet, and we're working with the city on, is that there's a bathroom that's expected to be installed there, and the city was getting some bids in on that bathroom. But other than that, by the end of this fall, the majority of that park will be available and installed ready to go.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any other questions? Other questions concerned? Supervisor Moore? Anybody on mine? Same guy? Aye. By the vote? Who have the voice for it? All favor?
Aye.
All votes? There's none, that's Nancy, by Morris. Takes us to, if you have your revised agenda, I intend Human Resources Committee, you should have a separate, come with a packet, Supervisor Parker.
Resolution 202024, approving temporary suspension of personnel ordinance, section HR 360, hours of work overtime and compensatory time as it relates to public health nurses and public health nurse manager. Public health care professionals are responsible for treating and working with patients and families affected by COVID-19. As of August 17, 2020, Jefferson County excluding Watertown, Javon, had 619 positive tests and 12,451 negative tests. Each positive case requires staff to conduct case investigation and contract tracing. This involves working with individuals who have been confirmed positive for COVID-19 and to identify and provide support to people, contacts, who may have been infected through exposure to the confirmed positive individual. Since the onset of COVID-19 in Jefferson County, Jefferson County public health nurses have been required to work additional hours in the evening and on weekends, accruing excessive amounts of compensatory time. Due to the demands of COVID-19, it is unrealistic that the nurses will be allowed to use all of their vacation compensatory time by the end of 2020. Jefferson County Personnel Ordinance currently states that public health nurses and the public health nurse manager are eligible to equally compensatory time on an hour-for-hour basis for time work in excess of 40 hours in a work week. There should be no tax compensation for the accrued exempt compensatory time. In addition, they may accrue up to 120 hours compensatory time on an hour-for-hour basis for actual hours worked over 40 hours per week. This may be replenished, but it must be used by November 30 of each year or this fourth of the week. An extension may be requested by November 15 of each year, subject to approval of the county administrator. A request to carryover any compensatory time earned between November 15 and November 30 must be made to the Human Resource Department by December 10, subject to the county administrator's approval. Compensatory time approved for carryover must be used by March of the succeeding year. The coronavirus outbreak is a unique occurrence that has not been related in the last five months. It is unknown exactly how and will continue. Although nurses continue to attempt to schedule time off from work, it is unlikely they'd be able to take three weeks of vacation on average as well, and it's in some cases over four more weeks compensatory time. Based on the current ordinance, this compensatory time would then be forfeited. Therefore, it is being requested to temporarily suspend section HR 360, hours of work overtime and compensatory time, and allow all public health nurses and the public health nurse manager to accrue compensatory time for COVID-19-related activities for the first five hours of actual hours worked over 40 hours per week. Any hours worked actually worked over the 45 hours per week in COVID-19-related activities will be paid as overtime at a rate of equal to hour, hour of the regular rate of pay, and the current 120 maximum hour will be increased to 480 hours. This request is retroactive to March 17, 2020, less than eight hours compensatory time already used or scheduled to be used and effective through October 31, 2020. The coronavirus aid and economic security act, CARE Act, provides for payment to state and tribal governments navigating the impact of COVID-19 outbreak. Eligible payments include payroll expenses for public health services, one, are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency; two, were not accounted for in adopted 2020 budget; and three, were incurred during the period that begins on March 1, 2020 and ends on October 31, 2020. Therefore, the temporary suspension of exempt compensatory time provision of the personnel ordinance will not only allow our public health professionals to be compensated for the unexpected hours they have worked, but they will also not have a financial impact on the county's fund balance. On September 1, 2020, the Human Resource Committee reviewed the request from the county administrator to approve the temporary suspension of personnel ordinance HR 360, hours of work overtime compensatory time as provided below, and recommend forwarding this resolution to the county board for resolution. Consideration, number one, public health nurses and public health nurse manager may accrue compensatory time on an hour-for-hour basis for COVID-19-related activities for the first five hours of actual work worked over 40 hours per week. Two, public health nurses, the public health nurse manager may be compensated overtime, paid at a rate equal to the regular rate of pay for any hours actually worked over 45 hours per week of COVID-19-related activities. Three, public health nurses and public health nurse managers may accrue up to 480 hours of compensatory time on an hour-for-hour basis for actual hours worked over 40 hours per week. This temporary suspension is retroactive to March 17, 2020, and effective through October 31, 2020. Compensatory time that the public health nurses and the public health nurse manager have already used or have scheduled to use may not apply to the temporary suspension of items one and two. This still note, as of August 15, 2020, six public health nurses and the public health nurse manager have a total of 955 and a half hours that are not included in 2020 budget that will be compensated at either overtime or regular rate of pay or used as compensatory time that otherwise would have been forfeited. As of August 15, 2020, the total cost, including associated benefits, is $38,597. Any hours or costs associated with the temporary suspension from August 16, 2020 through August, October 31, 2020 is unknown at this time. However, it is anticipated to be significantly less as additional limited-term personnel have been hired. It is anticipated that the CARE Act will provide payment for all these eligible payroll costs in deference to these wonderful folks and their mega-hours. I move for passage.
Who is the second? Second is by Dick Scho, Supervisor Scho. Any further discussion or questions? One second, Supervisor Drayden? One second, maybe we'll bring a mic over and give the brief. The 480 hours of comp time, who is that have to be used up on?
That cap is actually adjusted on behalf of all the hours that were already decreased, and most that would be paid out as the hour-for-hour overtime, you're converting to hour overtime. So, essentially, any of that that may have been up in the 480 hours, if they're not using it by the end of October 31st, they will be paid out.
Supervisor Morris? So, I'm sure there's a good reason, but what exactly is the reason for the October 31 code?
In general, that is, and we'll review it again at that time, but that is when the CARE Act funding has to be used up by, is that October 31st?
Other question, Supervisor Grant again.
These funds are compensated by the pension.
That was a yes for people.
So, sorry, yeah, we anticipate based on research we have done, that based on our overtime that the hour-for-hour rate is to be compensated on the CARES Act because it was unbudgeted within the budget. So, we get to apartments on the IRS guidelines.
Other questions? Questions, adjournments? Discussion? None? All in favor of this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Vote. You're done, resolution passes. It's just the planning and zoning, our chairman and our secretary are both on, I'm vice committee, so I will handle this report tonight. Report to the annual members, Jefferson County Board of Supervisors, Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee, having considered petitions to mend the official zoning map Jefferson County filed for public hearing of August 20, 2020, as required by law for public response statute. No assistance thereof having been given, and being duly advised in the wishes of Tom Borx, persons affected, areas affected, hereby makes the following recommendations, pool of petitions, listing of petitions as listed in the report dated this 31st day of August of 2020, going to Paul's secretary. As to the ordinance, ordinance number?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine.
Ordinance number nine, mending the official zoning map, I move for the adoption of this ordinance as presented. Who is the second? Supervisor Baskin was the second. Oh, Mr. Bernard. For the record supervisor, Bernard is standing for most of our conference interest. Any questions? All in favor of the ordinance, say aye?
Aye.
Vote. You're done, ordinance passes. A public comment, any public comment of a general nature, where items not on the agenda. Say done, now it's ready.
Pretty, I'm sorry, I got several announcements for you all to make, so. So, the first one is a revised agenda, you see, two means October. So, this is just a reminder, it is on the 13th. You'll get to spend some time, quality time with me as I present the budget for 2021. The staff has worked extremely hard, effort together to get this press for you all, so just in mind, I'll be on October 13th. On October 27th, that is, and it's not type O, we do have two means October, we have some board members, but that is our public hearing for the budget. And so, if you have folks who like to speak to the, on the board to talk about what they think should be in the budget and not in the budget, that is a great opportunity for that to occur, so that is on October 27th. As a past practice, if we have other action items, those could be taken up at that meeting as well, but the primary purpose is for a public hearing on that. Also, we need an initial notice last week that we're technically looking at the, basically, committee of the whole of the county board on September 29th. We're looking at this, it would be about a four to six o'clock meeting. And the purpose of that meeting is to brief the entire county board of the work of the buildings and grounds committee along with staff and Todd Lawson has been doing, related to a potential project at the courthouse, jail, and sheriff facilities. This has also been reviewed by the executive finance committee, so basic conversations with the chairs, they thought it was appropriate, we start brief, brief the whole county board at this point in time for an update, so we can have a discussion, what are the next, if there's next steps. Prior to that, we're looking to have basically an open house of the facilities of the courthouse, jail, sheriff's facility, MIS structure. Not all the board members have seen our facilities and the inner beams of the buildings, and so we're looking at the about two to four in the afternoon. At this point, we're looking at the more of like an open house concept. And we, if you are interested, you'll probably have some signups, we kind of separate groups, you get to choose the points. We've arranged with the courts, so you can go behind the scenes of the court areas as well, for areas that the public doesn't usually get to see, see, pass, see what goes on back there, get you down to the sheriff's department, et cetera. So, planning that being September 29th. At the community hall, we'll have Todd Lawson present, along with mechanical engineers. We will also have Boss Brothers, who've been helping open that Bayesian construction cox. Elders and associates plan to be there as well, talking about what financing might be at White as well, and obviously answer questions. Also, this week, we will be having COVID testing on the fairgrounds, so on Friday, the 11th, from 10 to 6:00, and then on Saturday, from 8 to 1:00, the National Guard will be here on site, I believe, at cattle barn, or horse barn, the dairy barn. So, the process is slick, if you are interested to get in, three tests. Then finally have one day in Florida announcement. So, there's a young lady who sees to my left, who has been serving for Blair since he's been gone, and I think we're, we might be in Fair Park by the time Blair gets back to work for county board meeting, but there's a special thing that they call the birthday, so I think we kind of need to do a little rendition of birthdays. Elaine is our long birthday. I'll try to start, we'll go from there, okay? Thanks a lot, we hope to be back soon, Michael. So, as a quick note, also, in October, we are going to try to be back to the county board. You can have it the special committee, based on, we're going to have a place. The intent is we'll be meeting in the county board starting October 13th. I assume we'll continue the offer as an option going forward, for those months and going forward, but just, kind of a plan, it will be in a county board meeting starting then.
Any other announcements? Supervisor Scho.
Next week, Friday and Saturday, the Solid Waste Committee is having an operation, clean sweep, fire, victory. And Brett Shear is having a little bit of trouble getting bond years, to help with clean sweep. I don't know, COVID or whatever it is. So, it's in Watertown, if you think you can help, Friday, it is 4:30. On Saturday morning, it's from 8 to 10:00, in Watertown. If you think you can help, please contact Brett Shear at the courthouse and let him know, because he is looking for them.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Scho. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Say done, I want to take the votes to adjourn. Moved by Supervisor Bernard, second by, several over here, by Supervisor John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.